If Gary makes it, I'm just requesting update on the storms that ripped through here, on our conditions, on how much damage we have and where we stand at this time.
Did your house flood? That's why you want to know?
No, but there's a big area that's underwater and I'd like to know update on power outage and where we stand. I mean, I think it's only right that it all of us know about it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Public Health and Safety Committee. Call to order. Roll call.
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Shawkey.
Here.
Alderman Kneipe. Alderman Police. Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Coles.
Here.
Alderman Lewitan.
I make a motion to we accept approved of minutes of July 12th, 2007. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? Okay. Report and recommendations for ordinance amendment to City Code, Chapter 14, Article 4 on Regulation on Feral Cats. We have made an ordinance about feral cats according to DuPage County Animal Control. We took an ordinance similar to theirs and it helps us assist the accountability for managing feral cats population. We recommended this by Mr. Alderman Shawkey wanted this and he does have a question. Go ahead.
Just a comment, Alderman Coles. It's not feral cats, it's feral cat colonies.
Feral cat colonies.
Where there's two, three, almost four dozen cats in one place.
All right.
If I might add, Alderman, just in a little bit more background information, we are trying to resolve problems we have in certain areas where people take on additional responsibilities, which then creates other problems for the residents in the area. We're hoping with this proposed ordinance that we can have people be a little bit more responsible on their actions and take the effects of what they're doing with regards to their neighbors. All this ordinance is saying is that if you are feeding stray feral cats, cats that cannot be identified to one particular house, that you have to provide us with the verification that you have had gotten rabies shots for these cats. And if you cannot do that, then you are to cease and desist with their care and well-being if it's not done in a proper manner, which is conducive for the general health of an area.
If you've read your unit, the ordinance, in Section 2, Section G, it tells you there that they should be, any person that undertakes feeding or harboring or maintaining feral cats in the city limit should be responsible for the cat and should require all applicable proportions to this code and DuPage County code and the state law concerning the care of cats. Such person should be acquired to provide any veterinarian care necessary to treat to prevent or injury to feral cats and should have them spayed it or neutered. The feral cats within seven days of the date, the person determine responsibility of the cat. That's, I wanted to have that out in the, so when people see it on TV, they know that if they have the cats and they're running loose and they feed them, that they're supposed to take care of them.
And staff, once again, Alderman, is just reiterating the fact that we want to make sure that there's proper and humane care for all animals in our municipality and that it be done in a manner which is not against the general health and well-being of the area that the person is wishing to do this in.
All right. I make a motion that we accept this ordinance, number 070, but we don't know what it is, and that we have somebody second it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Now, report and recommendation of ordinance amendment to Chapter 6, Article 2, in Section 6 dash, 6.201, to remove historical, no, I shouldn't say historical, historical cars exception for provisions to declare storage of improper and junk vehicles a nuisance. All right. This ordinance enforces the abandoned vehicles by the City Code Enforcement Officer. Currently, the code describes any vehicle stored outside older than 25 years with a historic vehicle, with the purpose of this ordinance is to exempt, would be removed or assist with the management of abandoned vehicles, junk vehicles stored on private property, and historical cars should be allowed to be kept. However, they should be stored inside of a building such as a garage. And that's, the staff recommends the adoption of this purpose of this ordinance change. Has anybody got any questions? Go ahead.
I have one question. Frank, does this mean that we going after private properties too? Are we going to be able to go on those property, properties and remove those vehicles? Or how are we going to enforce that?
We can go on private property at this time. What we're trying to do with this is close a loophole with regards to what's classified as a historical vehicle in storage outside on private property. In the past, our building inspector, our property maintenance inspector, Joe Johnson, has had problems with vehicles which have been declared by their owners as historical in value. And I am corrected, it's 25 years of age or older, not 20 years of age. And this is just closing a loophole. We are not saying they can't, what we're saying is if they are inoperable, if they are abandoned, if they are not registered, they have to be stored inside a building as not to create an ISO for the adjoining properties.
What? May I?
Go ahead.
Declaring storage improper of junk vehicles a nuisance. What I'm saying here is if you have a junk vehicle in a driveway, a private driveway, how are you going to enforce that? I understand, we talked about history of a vehicle, but we've been fighting this issue all along, at least in my ward, there's been a lot of, and old vehicles parked in driveway and we were told that we couldn't do anything about it. So is this ordinance going to allow us to give him a ticket or it's certain days he's got to get rid of it? Or is this, I mean, that's where I'm drawing. I mean, I think the ordinance is good, but how do we enforce junk driveway, junk cars on a private property? I mean, it doesn't.
We are not changing how we approach this. All we are doing is saying that if a vehicle's being declared by its owner is historical and it is inoperable and it is not registered, that it has to be stored inside of a building.
To get to Wesley's question, I had a couple of old cars in Bensonville and the code enforcement officer, now this was private property in back of my garage, and he came along and he issued tickets because the cars did not have city sticker and did not have license plates on. And each ticket was $100. And if you gave, and he said he would be back in 30 days, if the car did not have plates or city sticker on, in 30 days, he would give me another ticket and that's $250 apiece. So that's the way Bensonville is doing it.
Wait.
And guess what? I got rid of the cars.
Well, I understand, but the question, Joe, that's fine with the vehicle stickers.
But this is, this is what's going to be done. This is what has to be done.
Yeah, but we were already told that we could not step foot on the private property to make sure the vehicle stickers were in there.
Can I, can I?
I mean, where do we draw?
Clarification here, I'm not sure what you were told in the past and by who you were told that by. However, what I can say is that underneath our current ordinance with regards to abandoned motor vehicles, we cannot tow off of private property. Okay? So we can't go onto somebody's property and seize it. But once again, if we can seize, just like with property maintenance, weeds might be growing on somebody's property, but I mean, if you see them from a normal place to where you have every right to be, there's no reason why you can't make that judgment and hold that person accountable. You know, it's, it's a matter, I thought you were coming at this maybe from seizing the vehicle and actually towing it off the property. In that case, we can't do that. What we can do is hold the person accountable, bring them back into court, and then approach it from that point of view.
So any, so more or less what we're saying is any abandoned vehicle we have that the owner says is inoperative and it's sitting there, we going to waste, we going to take the time and take them to court to get it off the property?
We have.
That's what I'm getting right now.
The reason why we're proposing this ordinance change is exactly for that reason. We had a couple of houses which said, no, these vehicles are not abandoned. What they are is historical vehicles. They're more than 25 years of age and we have the right to keep them on our property. What we're saying is, is fine, keep them on your property, it's just store them inside of someplace if it's not a registered, duly-registered vehicle, if it's not an op, if it is operative. So we're just closing a loophole with this.
Fine. Go ahead. All right. I make a motion to accept this ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. This report and recommendation on the citizen survey, and I'm going to turn this over to Jeff and he's going to talk to us about this.
What you have before you has been already approved by council this previous April, which is the actual citizen survey. What wasn't approved in April was the incentive program. Staff was directed to come back with an incentive proposal for the survey. Staff is recommending that if we want to give an incentive, that it be a $5 rebate off the utility bill. Typically, checking around with other communities, they usually, I mean, 25% respondent rate would be pretty good. So even if we got a 25% respondent rate, that would cost around $5,000 to distribute the survey. In the water bill with Third Millennium, that would cost around $600. Staff is also suggesting for those residents who don't have utility bills, looking into contacting management associations and working something else out like a $5 gift card to Jewel or Target or some, something like that. This program would be similar to the garbage cans where we would pass out the surveys or distribute the surveys and then a resident would have, you know, to fill out the survey by, let's say, December 1st to get the $5 credit, so we wouldn't leave it open-ended. Similar to how the garbage cans, you sign up for October 1st and you get the discount. So that was, that's staff's proposal on the incentive program. If we want to do an incentive program, we don't have to, we could just hand out the survey and that would cost $600.
Mr. Williams?
Yes. We're proposing an incentive program because we've done this in the past. We've done three of these types of surveys and it's very difficult to get people to respond. That one of the most important things that we need to be aware of is getting the feedback from our residents. So that's why we are proposing the, this type of thing to provide an incentive because we need, we need to know what people feel about our community and without this, we don't think we would get that. The first time we did it, we partnered with a university, we actually went door-to-door and everybody volunteer and go and fill out the surveys to get the surveys back. And we use those surveys, we use them in strategic planning, we use them with our capital budgeting, and it's very important that we get their feedback. So it may seem kind of strange to, you know, have to do this, but people need an incentive and, and, you know, to participate. So that's why we're recommending it.
I agree with you. Alderman Cadella?
Mr. Manager, so that means that there was two of these surveys that were mailed in the past?
The first survey we did, we did it with volunteers, we went door-to-door, we spent the whole day.
Right.
The second survey, we actually mailed them.
Okay.
And we also used a university to compile, and that's the one you probably have seen, that was the last one.
Okay.
We have copies of both of those. And we have checked with other communities, we have looked at this from a national perspective, and this is what they're recommending in order to get the kind of return that we really want to get, so that we get a good idea of what the people in Wooddale feel, you know, what's going on in the community and what they feel is really important.
Sure. As a point of reference, do you remember the approximate return rate on that one that was mailed? Close, 20%, 30%, 5%?
I can't, I can't remember. I thought it was like 13%.
Okay.
And we really pushed for it. We went and we met with different groups, we went to the seniors group and everything like that. It was about 13%. We have that, I don't have that available tonight.
That's fine. Okay. Thanks.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I see that we're making the provision that we're going to communicate to the people that don't receive water bills on their residential, but I do think it's a little unrealistic to, that the $5 would go back on in associations and then trickle to the individual unit owner. Is there a way that the unit owner can bring in the survey to the finance window and get the $5 gift card?
Yeah, we're proposing advertising on the city sign, the website, the newsletter, and we're proposing come in, show your, you know, proper identification, that you have a Wooddale address, and you can come fill out the survey and get the $5 gift card.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to make a motion that we take the 2007 citizen survey and approve it in council as it's stated here. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Question.
Question.
Maybe a finance director could direct this. Which account will this come out of and was it a budget item for this year? I know we talked about it, but I don't know if it was a budget item.
The one other thing before that, we need a motion, the survey's been approved, we just need a motion to approve the.
On the money.
The incentive program.
Incentive program. It's telling us upstairs too.
Yes, Alderman Wesley, that question has come up recently. At the time when the budget was prepared last year, it wasn't clear if there was going to be an incentive program for this or not. So I do not believe there was a budgeted amount for this. Looking at the amount that we're speaking of, I don't think it would be outside of the realm of a department to absorb that or to do a budget transfer near the end of the year to accommodate this program so that we get the return that we would like.
Well, that's fine, but it just seems like we've been, you know, we did the garbage can, I don't know if that was a budget item, refund back or rebate. I mean, it just seems like there's more and more rebates coming back and we, I mean, we taking away our general fund or, I mean, there's just too many rebates coming back now in this council. I agree, we should give incentive back to the people, but, I mean, I have no problem doing this, but I'm having a hard time swallowing that all these rebates are now coming up and we taking it from this account that that wasn't a budget item. I mean, you know, but that's fine. I mean, if the council agreed to it, then, fine.
Alderman Kneipe?
Another question, I just want to clarify, make sure I understand properly that as a chairman, your motion was to approve the $5 rebate per residence as presented in this memo, correct?
That's right. Yeah. Thank you. Now, I'll put a little more into the motion stipulating that we can get it from the finance, that finance department can find.
There he said he could, so.
Well, all right, if he said he could, then we'll, okay.
Fine, I'm, I'm the same.
Do I hear a second?
There was a second on the floor, you just need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Items to consider for future meetings. Report from the Fire Department District on Fire Protection Service for the residents of south of Urban Park Road. This is, when is that supposed to come in? Do you know, Frank?
September 18th, 13.
The 13th.
Next, the next committee meeting.
All right. Boundary agreement eliminating prospect crossing from the city map. Report of choice programs at District 7 school. Now, why would we have anything like that?
Because, I'm sorry, because it's a budget, the city is paying for part of the program and that's, they have to come to us.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
There's a lot of concerns about that program.
All right. Locating of the noise monitors by O'Hara Noise, what's that, CC?
Compatibility.
Compatibility. All right. Repair of Section 15.2012 Residence Parking Permit, Residence Parking Permit Number 1.
When will the school be here? Or when will they be? Same time?
I have not gotten a date yet from the superintendent. The superintendent will be here, I believe it's going to happen sometime in the month of October.
It's not for future meetings, but it's just, I'd like to thank the staff for making sure that the broken tree limbs have been picked up like they've been doing. And I just like to remind the citizens of Wooddale that they need to clean the gutters in front of their houses. We've got flooding, but I think the majority of that flooding is because those sewers are backed up and because of debris. And I go out on Robin Lane and I clear, you know, near my house and the last time we had a heavy rain, I had somebody come out and start yelling that, you know, my basement's flooding, it's the first time it ever flooded, and all you had to do was look at his sewer in front of the house and see it was full of debris. All you had to do was brush it away, water went right down. We've had an awful lot of rain, I know we have, we may have some problems, but many of them are because of the citizens themselves, they'll take a hand in it. And again, thanks the staff for picking up those limbs and so forth as they are doing. Thank you.
All right. Number eight, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah, I'd like to call the finance meeting order. Let the mayor take note that the same people are present. I need a motion to approve that August 9th, 2007 minutes.
Second.
All in favor, or any changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 4, settlement of agreement of CA Press Refund. You want to take us through this one? I believe we talked about this, Frank, before, but you want to bring us up to date on it?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. On December 21st of '06, the Wooddale City Council approved a recommendation for the purchase of platform lighting at the Wooddale Train Station. We were going to replace these platform lights after we received a letter from Metra that there would be no cost sharing to replace the platform lights, or they would not replace the platform lights anyway. And it was, since we have to spend this refund plus additional dollars in order to, for the settlement, it has to be spent for a public improvement that will benefit the general population. Attached to your memorandum is a list of those items. However, at that time, the council felt that $74,000 plus, which has to be spent before May 108 for a public safety enhancement, that was not already funded, we had, in order to do that. And that's what they felt we should, we should do with that money. It may cost a little bit more than the $74,000, we estimated maybe $120,000, it would depend upon the types of lights that we purchased. All as I'm looking for is concurrence to go forward with this. Mr. Home of the City Services Department will come back with a proposal, will show you what the lights will look like, will show you the cost, and then we'll have a better estimate, but it will be over $74,000. It'll be between the $124 and $74, we don't know right now. But we need to get going with this project if we're going to resolve this settlement agreement. So I need a motion to concur with staff's recommendation and move forward to purchase the platform lights.
What, are we looking at what lights, I mean, what type of light style or?
I don't know yet. I have no idea what style yet. If we're still going to do the project, we have to make that determination, which lights we're going to get, we'll bring it back for approval. The question that I'm asking tonight is, are we still going to do this project or would you rather do a different project? And if you would, I would have to know what, how you would want this money invested. I provided a list of those items.
Well, I guess, I guess the concern is here, is the train station, if we're going forward to redo the train station, do we do the platform light? I know the platform lighting is bad over there, no doubt about it. I mean, I have, we discussed this before about redoing platform lighting and other issues, and I have no problem approving it. So, but I would, I guess we got to do it by a certain time, as you said in the memo, so. All right. Any questions if I obtain a motion?
Alderman Shawkey?
Yeah, it looks like there's a number of other areas that we can use that money for besides platform lighting. The radio updates for emergency telecommunications, there's a whole list here on page one. I'm just wondering why we're, if we don't have the train station figured out yet, why we would put in lights? Why not use it in an area other than that, that would be legitimate according to the settlement agreement?
We wouldn't be doing that because we don't need funding in any of these areas and the areas that we do need funding is already in the budget. That's one of the problems. It's limited to these items which I provided to you. And we don't have a whole bunch of time to get this together because it's got to be spent before May 1 of '08 and we have to start working on the project. So unless, if you have one of these projects that you would like us to work on, we can't, I can't come up with anything, nor can the, you know, the police department that would spend $74,000 for something we have not budgeted. That's one of the problems in this claim settlement. And we've talked at length at this and we decided, since the lighting for train depots is on here, that would be the best possible use for this, this funding at this particular time. It can't remember being in our budget now.
But we tabled the train station.
That this, the platform lighting has really nothing to do with the train station, they're two separate items. We were planning on doing it in conjunction with, but that can be done separately. And again, it's up to you what you would like to do with this money. I leave it up to you.
Well, is it, I.
Mr. Coles? All right. I believe that we should put the train station lighting up. The lighting isn't going to have any effect on the train station. The lighting can be always moved wherever we want it to do, once the lights are up. If the train station gets built and we have to move a couple of the lights, that isn't going to affect it. I mean, the lights, once the lights are up, it's there. I mean, I don't take the train, but I know it's dark there because I go by there at 6 o'clock in the morning and there ain't much lights there. So, I mean, as far as the lights are concerned, we don't know what kind of lights they're going to have. That is up to what we decide to pick, but we should spend that money for the lights. That's what it was designed, that's what we set it aside for. That's all I got to say. Mr. Cadella?
Yeah, Alderman Coles hit on all my hot topics there. I mean, I think we've got a situation that we have the potential to use some money to make it safer. to make it safer. I think there still has to be homework on what the lights are and where they're going to be, and a worst-case scenario, once we do move forward with the train station in whatever form that may take, if we have to move something, at least we've got the product there to move. Unfortunately, it's a, it's a, it's a cost that may be looked at as a double hit, and I think everybody up here knows, I don't like, I don't like moving forward until I've got the whole plan of the big picture in my head, but at the same time, because we are under the, under the time clock or under the gun here to, to move on these, my suggestion would be to go ahead and, and get them.
Go ahead, Mr. Home.
Yeah, Mr. Home is here now, and maybe he can expand a little bit on, on your question, Alderman Kedala, in regard to, there are like, I think, twelve styles, and we'd bring those to you, we, we have it all, and it would, again, come before you, but this would be the project we'd be moving and working on, because we still need, you know, we still need three or four, maybe six months to get this ready.
Yeah, the, the original direction, actually, that staff perceived was to look into lights that were similar in design to the decorative lights that we've put along Wooddale Road. And I approached that subject, approached that subject with Metra. Metra's response was that at a twelve-foot to fifteen-foot mounting height with those type of lights, it would become a hazard to the engineers with the train. They won't allow those type of lights on the platform. You can do those type of lights either way up high, or you have to do them real short, or you, what I'm recommending and what we'll probably look into is a, the same family, the same style of lights, but a different type that doesn't have that, that bright light, that, that, so it would be approved by Metra. But, so they will probably not look just like the ones on Wooddale Road, simply because of Metra's requirements.
So, what you're saying is Metra's going to have to approve any lighting we put on the platform?
Oh, yes. Most definitely.
Mr. Coles? I just want to let you know, Wesley, that it's tough when they hand you a check that you got a grant for, and that you have to send it back, and you have to put your name on it, because that's the toughest thing in the world, is when you got the grant and you got the money, and it doesn't get spent, and you have to send it back. So, I'm just letting you know that if we get a grant, let's spend the money, because you're going to lose it anyway. You haven't come across that, but I did. And it's pretty tough when you sign your name to a check that's going back to the state of Illinois. Okay? Mr. Charki?
So, you're saying that this forty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars ninety-three cents has already been budgeted for this from the general fund?
Yes, that, that's been allocated. That, plus the additional amount that we, the required expenditure, it's a total of seventy-four thousand dollars. That has been budgeted for this, exactly.
So, we're getting this rebate or whatever for twenty-five thousand, but we're going to be spending fifty thousand ourselves?
No, it, it's the twenty-five thousand dollars we're getting back, plus we have to put another forty-eight thousand dollars, almost forty-nine thousand dollars for a total of seventy-four thousand dollars that must be spent as our share for the, the final settlement.
So, if, if I went to the store to buy something and they had something I really didn't need yet, and it was fifty dollars, and they said they'd give me ten dollars to buy the fifty-dollar item, I'd want to do that, huh? I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking here, is, is it worth it to us if, like Alderman Wesley likes to say, if everybody wants it, fine, but is it worth us, worth it to us to add a fifty thousand of the twenty-five thousand, when we could be using that forty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars for something more importantly? I don't know.
One more. The thing is, to, again, to write back a check for twenty-five thousand dollars, that, that would be pretty hard to do. And, and I'm just going over this list, Frank must have left, but the nine-one-one system, that's in place already, that was done with a grant. Radio upgrade, emergency tech, communication center, that's been updated recently, I believe. Am I right, Frank? In-car high-crime area cameras, we have them in all our squad cars. We buy them that way, so that's done. Reverse nine-one-one is in place already. Porbo defibrillators, we have that. It's a budget item every time. Flu vaccines, we get those with their physicals. Am I correct? West Nile virus, we erase spray for that. Public transportation facility, we don't have that here yet, because we don't have the buses coming here, but that will be part of train station. Anti-drug such, DARE program, that's a grant that we get every year, just about?
No, we do not have a DARE program. We do an in-house program that's similar to that, but that is not a grant.
But we do, we do a program, so that answers for DARE program. Water, supply system improvement, that's a question mark. Important Emergency Operating Center, our center is pretty much updated, and it gets updated every year, just about. Public safety, food safety equipment, lighting for train depot, fire and police vehicles and equipment. All our squad cars is always budget for all that radio lights and all the whistles that you can imagine that's put on them. Fire department don't have nothing to do with us, that's a task separate taxing body. So, I have a hard time writing back a check for twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand ninety-four cents and thirty, no, ninety-four dollars and thirty cents. I believe Ms. Winger has a question. Did you, have your hands up before I?
I, I just wanted to clarify, the, the way I understood the situation, regardless, we have to write a check for seventy-four thousand, twenty-four dollars and twenty-three cents as part of the settlement. So, so there's really no choice of not writing that seventy-four thousand dollar check. Do I understand correct?
That is correct. For the terms of the settlement, we must spend that amount, and it must be spent in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Charki?
Last question. Wasn't there a comment that we don't have complete reverse nine-one-one, that we needed to purchase the additional numbers from the county or something?
We do not own our own nine-one-one system. We use the system which is owned by the sheriff's office, and we, like, tonight, we utilized that with our reverse nine-one-one for flooding Salt Creek. That is not a system we own. They allow us to use that. It's within, underneath their protocol, so we cannot use it for anything other than public safety and/or law enforcement needs.
Well, that, yeah, that's all we'd want to, just want to make sure we have that completed, so we don't need more money for that. All right, that's it.
Mr. Kedala?
Two questions. First, this, this date, is that the date that this money must be allocated, or that the check must actually have been written and in the recipient's hand?
You're not familiar with this, with this settlement. There were, I think, over twenty-eight municipalities involved in that. That was the date, the end of our fiscal year, that we agreed that we would spend the money. Yes.
So, actually, literally spent it.
Yes.
It's not just, we're going to spend it on this, it must be out of Wooddale's.